Ms. Clark, if you can, please call, have a row call for the subcommittee.
Councilor McCupro, Councilor Tenebri Garcia, Councilor Robinson, Councilor Taylor, Councilor Lopez, Councilor Vega Maldonado, Councilor LeBrown, Councilor Vido, Councilor DeJesus, and Councilor Judy Garcia. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You have eight members present you have a call, Mr. Chairman. The subject matter will be discussed with the Demulla Supermarket, Inc., DSM, Inc., invited to attend City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Alex Train, Director of Community Development, James R. Lamp, Principal LT Development LLC, Carmine Tomas, Principal LT Development, and all members of the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Clark, I ask the maker of this subcommittee requester, Councilor Robinson, if you have opening statements?
Yes. Actually, I'll run like this. I will do a little history on a memorandum of understanding, and then Alex and Kyle will pick it up from there, and then at the end we can entertain some questions if we have time. So whereas, Demullers has been operating a supermarket in Mystic Mall since December 1, 1981, but were tenants until 1998. Whereas, on behalf of the Mullahs, a second Francisco Trust purchased Mystic Mall out of bankruptcy in 1998. Whereas Chelsea would like the property to be redeveloped and to encourage the relocation of the existing supermarket. That did take place. Whereas, given the current allowed uses set forth in the zoning ordinance against Chelsea's vision for the area, Chelsea has been reconsidering the types of uses that can be undertaken on the property. Chelsea prefers that a mixed use, which would include residential component, rather than use that is wholly, partially retail or retail and commercial, be constructed on the property which would be the only uses allowed under the zoning ordinance. And whereas, without adopting the IPod or creating other changes in the zoning ordinance, the mixed use preferred by Chelsea cannot occur. Whereas, given the site constraints and real estate market conditions, without careful, deliberate urban design and site planning undertaken by the Mullahs in cooperation with Chelsea, any redevelopment of the property might be unsuccessful and therefore bears careful consideration before proceeding with additional phases. And whereas, the purpose of this agreement is to identify how the Mullahs and Chelsea can work toward successful development. The Mullahs has received approval of a definite subdivision plan by the Chelsea Planning Board consistent with the approval of preliminary plan of January 18, 2005. The approval of the roadway and lot configuration of the definitive subdivision plan does not foreclose the redevelopment of the property. Chelsea shall cooperate and make available to Mullahs existing information regarding property, including but not limited to traffic studies, data, utility location, and availability of subsurface conditions, urban or master planning, and market demand. In addition, Chelsea shall make its professional staff available to provide input and comments to the Mullahs as needed as plans develop. On September 26, 2005, Chelsea submitted to the City Council a proposed zoning change that would extend the existing IPod to the property, which will require mixed use projects comprised of combination of two or more of the following uses: residential, office, retail, restaurant, hotel, and open space upon the issuance of a special permit. If the technical evaluation of property described above reveals that the site conditions are such that the infrastructure, building costs for the redevelopment would be significantly more than would normally accompany a similar project, Chelsea and the Mullahs agreed to work cooperatively to secure any state or federal funds that would be available to defray such significant additional costs. The Mullahs shall engage an urban design planner with the approval of Chelsea, with said urban design planner working on behalf and at the discretion of the parties. Chelsea shall seek to secure the cooperation and financial support of additional major stakeholders in the study of that area. And now I'd ask Community Development to get into the West Chelsea Economic Development Study Plan.
Would you, Councilor, before the city come, would you want the Demullers to respond to your...
No.
Okay.
Well, they can respond at the end. I'll have some questions.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to join this evening's subcommittee meeting relative to the West Chelsea Economic Development Study. My name is Alex Train, and I serve as the Director of Housing and Community Development for the City of Chelsea, and I'm joined by Carl Allen, our Economic Development Specialist, and Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez, our Sustainability Manager, who are the key staff on this project. And so tonight, we're going to walk through the sort of overview of a new plan that we're embarking upon in conjunction with many community-based partners and residents. This meeting this evening represents the first step of this longer 10-month process where we're seeking to establish a plan that will realize a community vision for the area surrounding the Market Basket Site, as well as some of the properties along Everett Avenue and Route 16. And so we'll dive into sort of an overview of the guiding principles of this project, as well as the geographic area, before talking through our civic engagement plan and many of the other factors that are under consideration as part of the study before we segue on to a discussion about next steps. And so throughout the process, we're going to be informed by a number of guiding principles. I think first and foremost, we are looking to acknowledge that there are serious racial and economic inequities in this existing district. As many of you are familiar with, the existing district lies within a floodplain. It's an urban heat island and is subject to an immense amount of air pollution. Additionally, the future of the district hasn't necessarily been charted by residents or by community members. A lot of, you know, market forces have driven a lot of the development in this area. And so we're really striving to create a plan that builds upon the assets we have in this community, our human resources, our economic resources, like our small businesses, as well as other assets like our geography and infrastructure. Ultimately, you know, we're striving to catalyze investments in this district that support equitable economic development that benefits residents and small businesses in the community. And so that includes envisioning spaces for resident-owned businesses, startups, as well as high-density job opportunities in high-wage sectors. And so a lot of this is being done proactively right now as part of this plan due to a couple of major, major factors on the horizon. You know, I think first, it's notable that the state, through the Mass Department of Transportation, is actively planning an extension of the Silver Line from Chelsea into Everett, Somerville, and eventually Cambridge. And so we're trying to get out ahead of that and really establish a blueprint for this district that allows council and the community to shape what occurs to the benefit of residents. Furthermore, there's a lot of infrastructure in this district that's substandard and obsolete because the district falls within a floodplain and is subject to coastal flooding, as well as flooding from storms and the like. It's important that we cast an eye towards climate resiliency and bolster existing infrastructure to prepare for climate change. And then lastly, throughout this process, as we'll talk about in the civic engagement section, we're aiming to center resident voices and business owner voices throughout this process. And so as opposed to having this be kind of a top-down project where the city is dictating what occurs in this district, we really want to work with community members, work with councilors, and work with many of the businesses and property owners as well in the district, like the owners of the Market Basket Site, to create the shared vision. And so the map above illustrates the district in question, and so what we're entitling West Chelsea is really a district that's delineated in red on the map on the left-hand side, bounded by Route 16, the City of Everett, and Route 1. And so this district envelops the Market Basket Site, many of the low-lying light industrial buildings on Second Street, coupled with the commercial properties along Everett Avenue. Northward, it extends past the railroad tracks towards Route 16, adjacent to Chelsea High School, and a lot of the new development that's occurring in Everett. And despite it being over 175 acres, the district has a lot of underutilized property. Much of it is paved asphalt parking lots and other impervious surface areas that contribute to it as an urban heat island. Interestingly, there's a number of different zoning districts that govern this area, including light industrial and the industrial districts. And then additionally, there's an overlay district that also has to be considered due to the fact that this site is within an existing floodplain.
Can you just kind of, I just want to understand what's what here.
So everything... Absolutely. So everything that is in dark purple is the industrial districts. And so that's where kind of standard industry, like warehousing and the like, are allowed. The lighter purple is light industrial. There's two light industrial districts in Chelsea, and so that's for kind of some transportation and warehousing, some light manufacturing, as well as other commercial uses. Like, for instance, a lot of produce companies are in the light industrial district. And then the green in the center is the shopping center district, and so this envelops the Market Basket Site presently, and it allows that mix of retail that's on the site. And so everything within the black boundary is subject to the study in question.
Thank you.
And then on the right-hand side is the floodplain overlay district, and this district encompasses the area that is characterized as a 100-year floodplain by FEMA, meaning that there are certain design standards that have to be followed in that district due to the risks of flooding. And so on the transportation side, as I had alluded to at the beginning, the district's about to experience a, and a whole assortment of changes, some of them positive, but some of them that could also yield negative consequences for the city. On the bus network redesign that the MBTA is carrying out right now, the project will see three new or modified bus routes serving the district, including direct service to the Market Basket Site. These include a new line called the 104 that's going to run between Malden Center, the Market Basket Site, Bellingham Square, and eventually down Central Ave to Airport Station. It'll run every 15 minutes and provide residents with connections to the blue line and orange line. Additionally, there will be a modified Route 112, so much like the existing Route 112, this bus line will serve Admiral's Hill, the Soldiers' Home, Bellingham Square. But the difference now is that it'll go directly to Maverick Square, as opposed to going to both the blue line and the orange line. And then lastly, the new 113 is being established by the state to run between Bellingham Square, Market Basket, and Assembly Row in Somerville with connections to Everett. And this is a little bit less frequent, but it'll run every 30 minutes or so throughout the day. Moreover, the state has prioritized extending the Silver Line, evidenced by the ongoing Silver Line Extension Plan that's currently underway. And so the goal with the Silver Line Extension, from the city's perspective, is kind of twofold. We're aiming to encourage the adoption of electric equipment throughout the commuter rail and Silver Line facilities, really to improve air quality. And then secondly, when the Silver Line is extended, it will exert upward pressures on residents here, whether that is upward pressures on rent for people that are living month-to-month renting apartments, upward pressures on small businesses that may already have high retail rents. And so we want to plan proactively to recognize some of those impacts and be able to mitigate them as best as possible for the community. And so all in all, the state's planning process is going on through early 2023. The state has not yet programmed funding to extend the Silver Line, although we are expecting that the new state administration will be acting upon it relatively shortly. And most importantly, you know, we're urging that transportation and land use actions in this district are tightly coordinated. And so that's recognizing that transportation will have an impact on what occurs throughout the district and vice versa, that the district becomes a much more attractive area because of its transportation connections. And so environmentally, the district is also in a state that warrants further action. First and foremost, it represents an urban heat island due to its large expansive swaths of asphalt parking and impervious surfaces. So any given summer day, if you're a resident that's trekking over to Market Basket, it's a sweltering area with very little refuge. Moreover, air quality is poor, exacerbated by air pollution from Route 1. And so mitigating that urban heat is really key to creating a healthier, more vibrant environment for residents. Relative to sea level rise and climate, the district is currently encompassed by a floodplain that's scheduled to intensify over the coming years. And so right now, within a 100-year storm, we anticipate that the district will flood with about 1 to 3 feet of water. As we grow closer to 2050 and 260, that'll increase to floods that'll be more frequent and deeper, with flooding between 5 and 10 feet in elevation during a 100-year storm. In most years, you know, our 100-year storm happens 2 to 3 times a year, and so these are real impacts that will affect the existing residents and businesses within the district, as well as the critical infrastructure, like the Carter Street Pumping Station and the public transportation facilities that so many residents depend on. And so as we're embarking upon the study, before we begin engaging with an advisory committee and focus groups, we wanted to understand kind of the data and what's been occurring in this district. And so all in all, you know, the district has similar demographic and socioeconomic characteristics as the rest of the city, but interestingly, there are a couple of, you know, notable exceptions. And so first, you know, the sheer size of the district, especially by Chelsea's standards, is notable, at a coming in of about 174 acres of land. And all in all, you know, almost 6% of this area are what we consider kind of standard office buildings, and almost 30 to 35% are kind of the warehouse industrial buildings that we commonly see. But there's also an expansive amount of property, almost 11 acres, that's considered vacant land. That can either be parking lots that are underutilized, or land that's dormant and not used for any type of business purposes. And so in a district where, you know, we're striving to obtain as much property as possible for open space, public amenities, and the like, this represents a significant opportunity to really broaden public realm and public amenities for residents. Additionally, the building makeup is of relative interest to us, given the mix of sort of larger apartment buildings that are now spilling in from the City of Everett, as well as a variety of office and light industrial buildings. Now while these could sustain jobs and grow businesses, a lot of them are obsolete. There are office spaces that were built 20-plus years ago that haven't been renovated in quite some time. Additionally, they don't have kind of contemporary amenities that new businesses grow to depend on, like high-speed internet and reliable access. And so throughout the, throughout the next 2 months, we'll be kind of digging into a lot of the data that I had just mentioned and convening an advisory committee and a series of focus groups with residents to begin the planning process. And so this will be guided by a recognition that there are, you know, deeply entrenched inequities throughout this district that require city involvement, and we're looking to, you know, include as many residents, businesses, and stakeholders as possible throughout this process. And so that includes kind of the standard stakeholders, like property owners and small businesses, but it also includes...
If you could just speak a little closer to the mic, we're losing you.
Absolutely. So this also includes residents and businesses that are often marginalized from government. And so over the course of the next month, right after the new year, we'll be releasing, you know, calls for participation in a series of focus groups to guide the plan moving through 2023. And so the larger kind of plan will kick off with a community visioning meeting that'll occur in early 2023, to really set the direction for the team here, as well as the folks that are involved in these focus groups. Additionally, we'll release a citywide survey to collect ideas and input from residents and small businesses on the built environment, infrastructure, parks and open space, as well as land use. And then we'll be holding a series of smaller meetings with existing property owners, community-based organizations, representatives of different business sectors, as well as local boards and commissions like the Planning Board. This effort will culminate in about 10 months with a presentation that we would propose holding with City Council at a subcommittee to exhibit a draft plan for your review. And then once we incorporate your feedback and revisions into that, we would look to publish a final version of this at the end of 2023. And so our timeline's being driven also by the new MBTA Communities Law that's been passed. And so one of the, one of the major outcomes of this plan could be land use policy and zoning recommendations, and currently, the city is statutorily required to address residential zoning in the city in order to comply with the new MBTA Communities Act. So you will be hearing a lot of chatter in the near future about compliance with the zoning district. There will be, you know, an amendment put forward in order for the city to comply, and there's an opportunity to kind of obtain compliance in this district without changing the zoning to any significant degree away from what it is right now.
Alex, I mean, let me interrupt you, and want to be able to have the Mullahs talk to us about any plans or any vision for their property. You know, this is to hope to kickstart our relationship back with the Mullahs in the City of Chelsea. So I want to give you an opportunity to address the council, if you would.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Carmine Tomas. With me tonight is my, my partner, Jim Lamp. We are both from LT Development. We are consultants, basically, who work with Market Basket to manage their real estate in basically throughout their, their properties. So I'll, I'll give some thoughts and reactions to what Councilor Robinson, you said, and I'll, Jim will have an opportunity as well to add anything else that he might want to talk about. As I look at this, I think we're presented with a couple of things. I, I look at it in one sense to look, we're looking back to the past, so the, the 2006 memorandum of agreement, Councilor, that you read from to start the meeting. So there's a part of it that's backward-looking, and there's a part of it that's forward-looking as well, which is what Alex was talking about. Let me just say at the outset, I think the most important thing for us to say and for the, for the council, for all the councilors to hear, is that we are committed, on behalf of Market Basket, to work with the city on its vision for this area. We recognize the importance of this area to the City of Chelsea. Obviously, it's of great importance to Market Basket as our client, too. You know, we look back to the 2005 agreement, and that was well before Jim and my involvement with Market Basket, but I think we can look at what has been accomplished since that time. The supermarket that was put in place, I'm sure everyone here knows what a crown jewel that is for Market Basket as a supermarket company, which has, gosh, what is it, almost 90 supermarkets now? I'm sorry?
Come on, Councilor.
It's, it's a successful store in a lot of ways, and, and I think everyone benefits from that. There has been a lot of shopping center, retail development within that space as well since 2005, so there's almost 200,000 square feet of retail use as well. So, and there is a lot that can be said in terms of benefits to the community. There are probably almost 1,000 jobs that are created, almost 800 of which are Market Basket, a lot of which are benefiting the city residents as well. So it's, it's an important, it's an important property for Market Basket as well as Chelsea. And I think we look back on what was accomplished since that 2005 agreement, and it certainly a lot has happened since then. We have also, Alex was talking about the MBTA and all those initiatives, so since then, Jim and I can say that we have been involved with the MBTA directly, not just with the Silver Line, but also the new commuter rail station, working with them, granting easements, having meetings, basically doing everything we can to try and facilitate everything that the MBTA is doing there. And again, the MBTA has, has Market Basket's full support in that effort. And again, looking to the future, I think that really what's most important to say is that, again, we're committed, we have met with the city manager and with the Assistant City Manager, to talk about future plans. It is slightly complicated because of, again, a lot of the issues that Alex talked about with environmental issues that affect the site, and the fact that there are 15 different tenants with 200,000 square feet of, of space to basically juggle and deal with. But this is an important property. There is development potential there, and we can assure you that Market Basket is looking at this property, has been looking at this property, and will continue to look at this property, both in terms of our own team meetings, as well as in conjunction with the city and its, and its staff.
Jim, anything to add?
Any questions, of course? We're happy to answer, councilors.
Thank you. We have a few minutes left. I know my councilor here, Councilor DeJesus has a question. Now, the council, we're going to be very brief, but we do have about 10 minutes left, so after that, we want to send, leave the final statements for Councilor Robinson, for the maker of the subcommittee tonight. Councilor DeJesus.
Thank you, Councilor Brown, and thank you, team, for this awesome presentation. Alex Train, thank you for putting this together. My favorite part of this presentation, of course, is the civic engagement page, right? I'm really excited for this project and for the community to be able to take part of it and, and see it become a reality. I would like to know more about, not so much how the data of the community input is collected, but who is actually going to be collecting it, right? Because sometimes that's the most important part, and ensuring that there is some type of familiarity with the community's culture and customs, and, and trying to make sure they're accessing everyone at, at their level.
Yeah, that's a great question. So as part of this, we are going to be working with both internal staff that are multilingual, as well as external partners, including the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and community-based organizations, to do a lot of the stakeholder engagement, data collection, and really relationship building around the particular district. And so this will involve primarily one-on-one discussions, focus group meetings, and, you know, smaller stakeholder meetings that are more intimate, where folks aren't feeling as, you know, pressured to potentially share or not share. And so being able to approach folks, you know, primarily in Spanish and primarily in places that they're comfortable is going to be really, really important to this. And so the civic engagement is going to be led by our, our internal team, Lourdes and our team, as well as supplemented by community-based organizations and the MAPC staff, the majority of which are, are multilingual.
Awesome. Thank you, Alex.
Councilor Zornis, Councilor Yeo.
I just, initially, when this was brought up, I thought that we didn't have any right to even impose anything on the Market Basket Site. I'm looking at something that's 18 years old. The city has changed significantly. But I really love the route that the city is going and the things that we're censoring as what our priorities are. And from what I heard from the other side, or I'm not assuming that they're sized, but from Market Basket, was that there is a willingness, that, that folks are amenable, if there is something that kind of falls in line, that our values are kind of aligning somewhere, so that there is a potential. I just want to... I just want to clarify that that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, there, as I said, we want to hear what the city's ideas are. We want to understand, and, and Market Basket wants to be able to understand what the vision is for this whole area. You know, obviously, there is a lot that this site provides in terms of retail amenities that's important to be able to serve a lot of the things we're talking about here. So, but it's important for us to be able to engage openly in a discussion with the city, to understand what the city's vision is, and, and to be able to look to the future to see what, you know, would be a benefit to both the city and Market Basket for this site and really all the properties around.
Beautiful. I just kind of wanted to hear it for myself. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor, okay, Counselor Robinson, I'd like you to have the final question.
Actually, this was just to get you guys in the room so we can have a conversation. It's nothing personal, but we want to see the land be developed. We want to create a good working partnership with the Moolahs. So what I, what we'll do is we'll continue this meeting so we can make sure that we have some dialogue. I have some questions I'll give to you that you might want to respond back to us. And I appreciate you coming here tonight for us. All right? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it. We got about five minutes, councilors, before the seven P.M. show start. If you'd like to say hello to the guys outside for Market Basket, please do so outside. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.